All the meet regular meeting, the Windsor Heights City Council Monday, May fourth to order. Roll call.
Gary's. Here. Joseph Jones.
Here.
LaFredo. Do we see him on?
I did.
He was. Don't see him now, though.
Okay. Um, Mike Jones.
Here.
Uh, Harms.
Here.
Okay, folks, we'll assume Mike is having some issues and he'll get back, so uh, we're gonna try something a little bit different today. I'm gonna try and do the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon. One nation, under God. Indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Gary's.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Harms. LaFredo. Still not here.
Okay, next item is public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action will be taken. Please state your name, address for the record, and no more than five minutes. We got anyone from outside that would like to speak? None noted. Next item is consent agenda. Any item can be removed for separate consideration. Move to approve.
I'm moved.
Roll call.
Harms. Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Okay. New business. Consideration for setting a public hearing for fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty budget amendment for five eighteen at six PM during a regular council meeting. Move to.
Move to approve.
Roll call. Roll call.
Uh, Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Gary's.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Harms.
Harms.
Next item for consideration is discussion of Public Works facilities and Walnut Creek floodplain. Dalton. Are you on here?
Yep, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Alrighty, so I'm gonna do my best here at doing a PowerPoint presentation over the Zoom. Little screen too. Share. Okay, you guys able to see that?
Yeah.
Cut.
There you go. That's much better.
Alright, so I uh, put this into a PowerPoint presentation so it would be maybe a little easier to digest because there's quite a bit of information to get the whole picture of what we're talking about here, so. Really at question are flooding concerns surrounding the community center and the public workshop and the salt storage facility. Uh, part of the fiscal year twenty one budget uh, was a new salt storage facility. So I uh, pulled up the floodplain maps to see where I can start citing a new salt storage facility and quickly realized that the entire Public Works area, Colby Park, um, that whole area is in the floodplain, uh, and so that that poses some pretty obvious risks. So I'm gonna uh, break it down a little bit here. The shop and the salt storage facility were built uh, right around nineteen seventy to the best of my knowledge. Uh, the community center in Colby Park were redeveloped starting in two thousand nine, and I think that project started or finished up in two thousand eleven, uh, to the best of my knowledge, that the original shelter house that used to be down at Colby Park, um, that was built around nineteen seventy as well, when the public workshop and the rest of the park was built. I think that was all part of one like larger project. The aerial photo that I have here, uh, with the star on it, the star is where the uh, the facility and the park is right now. But really, uh, it's interesting to look, if you can see my cursor, uh, the right or corner here, so Grimes, the west side of Urbandale, west side of Clive, there's really nothing up here, so in the last forty, fifty years, there's just been an explosion in growth and a watershed, which is, uh, among other things, contributed to the increased size and depth of the floodplain. So, on the right is the flood insurance rate map, which I'm gonna just refer to as the firm from nineteen ninety-two, uh, up until last year, what this was the firm that the city was using for all floodplain management. Uh, at the time that this firm, uh, was put into, I guess, development, the, or to affection, the um, the community center was either right outside of the floodplain or right on the floodplain, however, the shop was most likely right in, right in the floodplain, but it's almost right out of it, so. I'm not sure when the, the map prior to this one was in effect, but I'm assuming it was sometime in the seventies because it looks like these are updated every fifteen to twenty years. Uh, the dark gray area is the one hundred year floodplain, and the white blue area right here is the five hundred year floodplain, and just for reference, uh, the industry standard anymore is to kind of shy away from calling it the one hundred or five hundred year floodplain and calling it either the one percent chance of annual occurrence or the zero point two percent chance of annual occurrence. It's kind of sticks one way, half a dozen the other, but um, if I use them interchangeably, the seed being that's, that's why. So contrasting the historic firm with the effective firm, uh, the effective firm became effective uh, back in February of twenty nineteen, so just last year. The one hundred year and five hundred year floodplains expanded significantly in the last twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, uh, both in the elevation and in the footprint, so the water got deeper and it also spread quite a bit wider, so. Uh, on the map before, none of Walmart was in the five hundred year floodplain. Were very little of it, and now almost all of Walmart, except this little sliver back here is in the five hundred year floodplain. Um, the one hundred year floodplain has also taken up a decent chunk of their parking lot. Getting into the residential area, uh, uh, the floodplain used to stop right at the intersection of sixty-eighth and school, or right in that area, and now goes to sixty-seventh and school, and as the upper reaches of the Walnut Creek watershed are developed, I can only imagine that that, that floodplain is gonna continue to, to spread wider and deeper. So I put the map side by side, this is kind of a reference, he can see how significantly, uh, the floodplain has expanded in the last twenty-eight years. So, uh, draw your attention to the intersection of sixty-eighth and school, as I mentioned on the previous slide. Sixty-eighth and school is right on that area, like the fringe, maybe in the floodplain. Um, definitely in the five hundred year, now sixty-eighth and school is most definitely in the floodplain, and it would likely be under, without getting out the study, I don't know the depth, but just ballparking it probably about a foot and a half of water. Another one to note is, uh, like I said, the Walmart parking lot, so, uh, here's the Buffalo Road Bridge. I don't think there was a bridge there in ninety-two, but here's the bridge, uh, here's the bridge today, and you can just see how much larger the floodplain is, like this whole property is now in the floodplain. So, when I was trying to figure out where to put this new salt storage facility, let me take a step back, is everybody with me so far?
Yeah.
Okay. So. When I was trying to figure out where to put the new salt storage building, I got out those firms that I learned how to use, uh, that floodplain administrator training that I went to back in, uh, February. I think it was February, uh, before that, I had basically no experience doing the floodplain administrator type stuff, now stormwater infrastructure management, storm sewer maintenance and stuff, yeah, obviously, but floodplain administration is kind of a different beast entirely, so I got the maps out. Uh, thought there's no way that can be right, and so I had, when uh, Bolton Make survey crew was out on Seventy-third Street conducting survey for the road reconstruction, I uh, kind of hijacked two of their surveyors and had them take a couple of quick elevation shots just to see if my suspicions were true. Uh, the pictures here on the right are an excerpt from an email that Justin sent me, and uh, they are unfortunately, as I suspected, so. Effective base flood elevation, base flood elevation summarized is uh, surface water of the one hundred year flood, or the one percent chance of annual occurrence. So the base flood is the one hundred year flood, and that elevation is eight twenty-eight and a half feet, uh, at the, at the um, public workshop, and our finished floor is at eight twenty-six point four, or thereabouts, the community center, the effective BFEs, so what the base flood elevation currently is with the maps uh, adopted or that became effective last year, the BFE is eight twenty-eight point nine, and the finished floor is eight twenty-seven point one. However, it's worth noting, uh, that the historic BFE, so the BFE that was in effect when the community center was constructed was eight twenty-six point one, and I don't think that it's any coincidence that eight twenty-six point one and eight twenty-seven point one are exactly one foot in difference, because the standard is if you're gonna build, uh, build in or near the floodplain, it needs to have one foot of freeboard, uh, freeboard being the, the vertical distance between the bottom of the finished floor elevation or the lowest opening to the structure and the top of the flood, uh, elevation, so. At the time, the community center wasn't compliant, and it would, it would be acceptable under standards. So, to summarize, the BFE increased by nearly three feet, two point eight feet between ninety-two and twenty nineteen. So as it currently sits, the community center will be under one point eight feet of water under the modeled one hundred year event, and the shop would be under two point one feet of water. Uh, obviously, two feet of water in any building is gonna ruin most of the building systems, uh, appliances, finishes, electrical systems, plumbing, security, uh, siding, windows, plumbing, everything. And in the shop, quite a bit of the dam, uh, the damage would be sustained on, uh, on equipment and vehicles. We also, uh, Chad and I just worked with our insurance agent on our insurance renewals for this year, which got me thinking to, well, if we're now in the floodplain, I wonder if we have flood insurance, and so I just got these numbers last week, and this is what I've kind of been working on is getting all this information together for you guys, so you can see it all at once, but the premiums for, for flood insurance are, are quite expensive, so I took, I had him provide estimates on uh, low premium, high deductible plans and the opposite as well. The, the premiums will range anywhere from front forty-one thousand to almost sixty-one thousand dollars, however, uh, this is absent what's called an elevation certificate. An elevation certificate is basically a tool that insurance, an insurance adjuster uses to build uh, a flood insurance policy, so back to this map, not, obviously not every house that's in the floodplain is created equal, so just by saying that you're in the floodplain isn't necessarily saying that there's a terribly high risk of flooding, but it is saying that there's a risk of flooding at the one hundred year event or the one percent chance of that, so. In order to figure out exactly what our exposure is, we need to have what's called an elevation certificate. Uh, the insurance company can have their crew provide that for the cost of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars total for the three buildings. Um, I reached out to Bolton Make to see if they would be able to match that price, because I think that it would be good if there was a third party that did that, um, and they are able to do that for that price. Um, it's a ten business day turnaround on those from both companies, and our insurance agent indicated, Mark Curry indicated that uh, getting the, the elevation certificates in place, depending on the results of them, could drastically decrease our flood insurance policy premiums, but it's impossible to say without having those in hand. So for example, somebody who lives on the north side of the floodplain here on Sixty-Ninth Street, if they got elevation certificates, they might say, oh, well, in a one hundred year flood, you only get two inches of water in your house, okay, we'll insure your house for pennies because the damage is gonna be minimal, whereas us, we're about as much in the floodplain as you can get, so I don't know how much it'll decrease it, I just wanna be, um, completely forthcoming with you guys, I don't know how much it would decrease our, our premiums, but it could decrease some. So now I'm gonna run through some options, and I've talked to Susan and Teresa and Mike a little bit about this, and uh, there's really, there's not a, a good option, and so, uh, I hate, I hate to bring you guys a problem without a solution, but I guess I'm looking for some input. The options here are just what I can think of, and they're definitely not meant to be all encompassing, so if you've got better ideas, I would, I would be thrilled to hear them, I'm hoping that I'm missing an obvious, easy, good answer, I, I, I really am hoping that's the case. So option one, through five right here, and I'm gonna go through them in detail in the following slides. Option one is purchase flood insurance and do nothing else. Uh, in the short term, this will be affordable, in the long term, it's gonna get terribly expensive. Flood insurance is, is pretty expensive by design, and uh, there is no return on investment, so it's not like we can say, yeah, we, we're, we're putting forty thousand dollars a year into this building and making it worth more, it's, it's just money gone. Uh, the photo at the right shows where the, the debris line was from the high water mark in the floods of twenty eighteen. Uh, it's estimated that those floods were a twenty-five to fifty-year flood event, and so in the event of a one hundred year flood event, you can only assume that the water level will be significantly higher than that and will pretty well destroy a lot, or most things in the shop that aren't elevated.
Bolton.
Yes.
What kind of equipment damage occurred two years ago?
Uh, none, it, it didn't get into the shop, so we didn't have any equipment damage, we had brake damage on one of the trucks, but um, that was just from driving it and
Okay.
water. I don't even know damage, squeaky brakes for a couple of weeks, but no big deal. Option two is the floodproof the existing shop and community center. Uh, so if it's not quite as simple as just building a berm around this facility, uh, unfortunately, because you gotta think where you start and stop that berm, as well as all the drainage that goes through that site, and so you'd have to create some kind of a pump system to pump the water around the site. Uh, and then you have constant pump maintenance, and if those ma, if the pumps go down, even if it's not a flood event, if those pumps go down, then you risk flooding the side out. Uh, berms, retaining walls, floodgates, and pumps. There's also bay doors across the front of this whole building, and on the salt building, and there's two rear doors here, and so to maintain access to the building, you'd have to have some kind of a gate or a float system or something to get in and out. I personally don't know how feasible that would be, but it's something we can look into if you guys would like. Um, also, it's worth noting that the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, FEMA, and the Army Corps of Engineers are gonna have to permit work that we do to floodproof this structure. Reason being is that, let's say that we build a huge berm around this, uh, to hold water out. Well, in the event of a flood, that water's gonna have to go somewhere, and it's gonna go under our neighbors here at the Windsor Townhomes, and so if we increase the flood disaster risk at a different property, um, it's likely to be disapproved by, uh, regulating authorities. The same can be true for the Windsor Heights Community Center, so if we build like a retaining wall around the whole thing with floodgates and stuff, uh, we'll have to have pumps, uh, we'll have to get approval, I think that the footprint of that is probably a bit lower, so I don't know, FEMA and DNR would be as, as opposed to that, that, it's something we can look into. Option three is raise the existing shop indoor community center. I think this is not really an option, but I put it on here because, once you know, I thought about it. To raise it, we'd have to tear the buildings down and then build them back up. In addition to just building back up, you have to bring in three feet of filter. Uh, FEMA and the DNR looked pretty poorly upon bringing fill into the floodplain. Uh, if you raise the shop up, you're gonna have to raise the driveway, you're gonna have to raise the driveway's connection to school street, sixty-eighth, and so um, then you just got yourself, uh, a shop project and a driveway project and a streets project, and probably some water and sidewalk, and um, I, I don't think it would get approved in the first place, but again, that's something we could look into if you guys wanted to. Uh, option four, and I wanna be very clear, this whole thing is not some ruse to get a new shop, because I'm perfectly happy where I'm at, I, this is that is not what this is about, I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna be dumping money into this shop, you guys are aware of the risks that go with it, so. Uh, I identified a few possible locations in town, and um, this isn't any like big secret, I just pick properties that don't currently have anything on them, so. Um, the only one that I've really done any digging on is the Sears Tire Center, I called, uh, Colby, and uh, I have actually had a conversation with Walmart, it sounds like they would be willing to lease that property to us, but not sell, and I don't know if it would be in the best interest of the city to sign a lease for a property like that, because at the end of the lease, if we don't have anywhere to go, that, that would be a pretty bad deal. Uh, Sixty-third and Hickman, uh, Sixty-third University, and then eleven thirty-three sixty-sixth, now it's kind of an interesting site, that's currently where Public Safety Building is. So, and I've talked to Mark about it a little bit, but if we were to move on to that site, it would be basically be rebuilding the Public Safety Building and the City Hall and the Public Works Building all at the same time to make them work on that footprint, and so I don't think that's a great option either, because then you're building basically a new civic center, uh, when really the problem isn't with the other two buildings, it's with the one, and so that also doesn't fix our community center problem, so. It's an option, uh, I just put it on there because I know a lot of towns do have really one centralized location, and I think it'd be cool, but I think it'd be terribly expensive, and I don't know how practical. Then option five, I don't know if I like this option either, it's moved the shop outside of the city limits, and I haven't even begun to cite possible locations, and I wouldn't really explore that unless that was you guys' direction. Um, I'm gonna wrap it up by just pointing out a few things to make sure we're all clear on, is that the community center, the shop, and salt storage facility were built in compliance with floodplain regulations at the time. So, while they're currently in the floodplain, and uh, I think that if any of us were here, you know, with hindsight being twenty twenty, we maybe would have done things differently. It is what it is, and so at the time, they were built a foot above the floodplain, and then the floodplain came to them, and it's just gonna continue to go higher and wider. My focus has been primarily on the shop and the salt building, and that's, that's for two reasons. First one is that the community center is darn near brand new, and the city has a lot of pride in that, and so I think that tearing it down and moving it or elevating it is just not likely to happen. Second reason is that if the, the community center were to flood, that'd obviously be a pretty bad deal, but uh, we can recover from that, and if we gotta cancel some weddings or graduations, that's, that's really bad, but what would be worse is if the flood, the shop flooded out uh, in November, in November flood, uh, flooded out our plows, flooded out all of our salt. And then we weren't able to perform snow removal all winter. So, um, if the public workshop goes down and we lose all of our equipment, the public works crew won't be able to assist with any of the, the flood cleanup, cleanup efforts around town. So, uh, in twenty eighteen, we uh, tried renting some equipment to help clean up, and I think everybody had about the same idea as us, it's not to say we couldn't get any equipment, but the equipment dealers around town were pretty low on their stock, so saying that, oh, you know, if we lose a plow truck, we'll just rent another one, well, if we rent, if we lose a plow truck, I think it's probably safe to say that there's gonna be other people that lose them as well, and so they'll be hard to get, not to say we can't, it's just something to keep in mind. The last thing that we wanna make sure, I wanna make sure you guys are aware of is that flood, flood insurance, and they really beat this into us in that class, flood insurance is not designed to make you whole, so. It's incredibly expensive, and that expense is to incentivize people to not build in the floodplain like we've done here. So if they made it really affordable, and they made it so that if you get damaged, the federal government will come in and guarantee that you get one hundred percent of the value lost, uh, it wouldn't incentivize people to get out of the floodplain. And so just saying that we'll get flood insurance and call her good, I mean, it'll make the buildings good, but any contents we lose, shouldn't say any contents, but a lot of the contents that, that will be on us, I think there's writers you can get uh, writers on the insurance policy, but those are also incredibly expensive. So, I think that we should start by getting the elevation certificates. It's not cheap, it's two thousand two hundred and fifty bucks for the three buildings, but uh, with the numbers that it showed you, I think that's a pretty good investment, otherwise our, our cost for flood insurance is gonna be significantly higher, or could be significantly higher than it needs to be. And then after we get those insurance quotes with the elevation certificates, we revisit this, and kind of put together a plan moving forward to see what, what next best steps would be.
I have a couple of follow-up questions for you.
Sure.
As I usually do, a- anyway, uh, I kind of like the option of looking for a different location as a possibility, um, I think you said something about, maybe I didn't, maybe I made this up, but around what City Hall is now, and connected in the Lions Park, uh, may, may entail purchasing a home. And uh, have you considered that at all?
Um, yes, I mean, that's something I've kind of kicked around, and that's something I can look into a little more, but for the sake of, give me, we put this, I put this information that, that memo I was sending you guys that was in the council packet, so I didn't want anybody seeing, what, the city's thinking about buying my house? I, I didn't wanna even go down that road, so.
I don't, I don't think it would be meant with like one home probably, but I would all, you know, there was a home across the street from the Public Safety Building too that offered just sell their house, and uh, we rejected that at that time. So I, I, I kind of like the idea of of exploring that possibility further. I'm not in favor of the sixty-third and Hickman property, I mean, we sold it, and um, I mean, it was kind of a disgraceful sale, really, uh, but, but anyway, and then buying it back or leasing it back, I don't think would go over well. Yeah. So, and I don't know what's along sixty-third, whether church owns those three homes, so. I, I think it's worthwhile to explore other locations rather than spend a lot of money either rebuilding a yeah, public works building, or remodeling it, or buying this insurance annually. So, but I, I, I do agree, getting their certificates is good for a step. And uh, it's not that costly, so I would go ahead and urge you to pursue that. But I, I think I think there's a lot of options to explore.
I think those certificates are a good starting point. Do you have an idea of, I guess, looking, you know, looking in the future about what your sort of, you know, your space needs will be? You know, whether or not the space you have, I mean, projecting into the future, whether or not that's big or too small, have you given any thought to that?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want anything bigger than what we have right now. As far as projecting needs in the future, um, I think that our needs are met right As far as projecting needs in the future, I think that our needs are met right now, but. As operations kind of change, you know, we might, we might not need all this space. And so really it kind of comes down to some soul searching. Greater than just public works, like where does the city, where does the city see itself in five years? And I'm, I'm not advocating one way or the other on what you guys want to do with, with the shared services and all that. But if we're going to talk about. Building a ten million dollar city hall building, it would probably be. Wise to have a plan. Okay, this is, this is going to be the use for this building in ten years. Because this is what we want our staffing to be and all that, you know?
Cause I also think that it probably falls into potentially the shared services conversation. I also am curious, and this is just come from this discussion this evening. But so we've done a variety of things in and around this building over the course. I mean, we continuously make investments into the community center to make improvements. We have, we did an assessment survey of the, your space and your facility. At Public Works over the course of the last couple of years, we've invested a lot of dollars into evaluating that space. Making improvements, those sorts of things. You came to us with a list of laundry list of things. Now today, it's a very different direction. So I guess I'm just curious why all of a sudden we're having this flooding. And we have to move this facility conversation when in fact, I think that's something we should have thought about two years ago. As opposed to when, when we were in the middle of the flood. So I guess I'm a little surprised by this conversation today. It doesn't diminish it or take it away. I guess I, I just would have. Before we already invested the thousands of dollars we already have in that facility. That we would have had that conversation two years ago as opposed to today, but we can't, we can't change that. So how do we move forward? And so I think it would be helpful for me if you can pull the information together on what are the improvements? Because I think that would be helpful for us to know what we've already invested in that space. Because I think that probably plays a role or you know, is a, is a factor as well. So if you can let us know, not only in the community center, what are all of the dollars and improvements that we've made, including the recent. Redoing of, you know, the ADA compliance and those sorts of things. In addition to the Public Works Building and all the stuff that we've done over there. So if you can come back to us with kind of a chart of accounts and, and when I, or chart of improvements, if you will, and what are the dollars that we've spent over the. Course of the last couple of years would be helpful for me. As we're contemplating and looking, sounds like these certificates are, are a, a good first step as a way to consider. I guess some other things I actually have owned and do own property and flood. So I know how flood insurance works and all of that. And so I'm curious. What has been, if you can give us a better history or understanding of what the, the past flooding. Incidents has yield on our properties. So what have, what has the damage been? And to, you know, how much water was there and that sort of thing? If we can have an understanding of that. Not that it's going to continue to go away, but, or that it's going to diminish it all because clearly that, that floodplain is growing to know how it works. But if we can have an understanding of what that was in the time period, I think. So if you could give us some sort of timeline, that would be helpful. I appreciated the slides tonight, but I'm not sure it's all pieced together to look at it. You know, kind of in a landscape view. So I think that would also be helpful as we continue to look at and consider this. And I think regardless of whatever we decide to do, I think we've got two different buildings in two different situations that we need to deal with. This was really presented as a public works building, you know, or at least that's how I feel like it's being presented. But it really is, I guess that's a way, that way on the agenda too, but it's really about the community center too, which is a huge investment for this community. And so how do we look at, what do we have to do to protect that? It's not like we can, you know, pick it up and move it to a different location. And so because of that, I think we have to look and say, okay, based on what we know today, based on what we know about the floodplain. Based on what we know about the history of those floodwaters, what, you know. Are other potential options do we have? Whether it's on one of our properties, whether it's on another space in the community. What, you know, are there different flood systems, prevention systems that we could. Utilize or implement to be able to protect this space, whether, you know, upstream and that sort of thing. So I guess I, I want to look at this a little bit broader picture. And we need to certainly have a collection of more information from my perspective. Thank you.
Trace, I would, I would agree with that. There's good thoughts. That salt building, I'm not sure where we are with that. I mean, it's pretty well. Looks like it's seen its better days. Don't tell me, is that true?
Yeah, that, that's definitely true. I'm definitely not going to move forward with replacing that though until I know what, what you guys would like to see there though. So. Kind of on standby at this point.
Yeah, I'd be on standby on that salt building.
Yeah, definitely.
Anyway, so that's a need. I wonder on the community center how hard it would be, it'd be hard, obviously. But feasible to raise the floor. On that community center and have a, you know, have it descending up higher. And maybe lower, you know, the, the ceiling might be a little bit lower than.
I can definitely look into that or.
I mean, that's just, that's just an out of the box.
Yeah, yeah.
But that to me is a potential. To put, take that out of jeopardy where it is now, if you raise it up two or three inches. And take two or three inches off the, off the ceiling. Cause it's a pretty high ceiling.
We're talking two feet though, Mike.
We're talking what?
It's, it's two feet. We got to move it.
Sixteen feet upward?
No, two, two feet up. I'm sorry, two feet or one point eight, I think it might have been.
Okay, well, whatever it was, but I don't know how high the ceilings are. They seem pretty high.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's a possibility as, as Tree said, looking at options and gaining more information.
Sure.
I think that's where it is. Dalton has some work to do with Mark to figure some of this stuff out. And with the bolt and Mank with the insurance companies and so on, let's let him go and do the research. And come back to us on multiple occasions with an update.
Yeah, and I like that. And I'm sure Don, you've probably already done this, consulted with DNR and get their thoughts.
So I actually reached out to the consultant that was the civil engineer for the community center. And I asked him, what is going on? What, why, why? And they said, well, and this is in the past and it's not going to change anything, but they said that Windsor Heights was pretty adamant. This community center is going in and this is going in where it went. And so we advised against doing this. They said that we can, I'm not able to find any, any letters or anything that. So.
Okay, but I mean, they could, moving forward, because we can't go backwards. But anyway, I think DNR would be a good partner in this whole process too.
Sure. Before we move on here, Teresa, can I make sure I got all your requests down here so I don't miss any of them? You want a list of expenditures and improvements made thus far on the community center and then improvements made to the public works facility. Over the last, I want to say like five years.
Yeah, I think fi- five years is appropriate.
You want a list of losses of the community center and the public works facility from flooding? What else was there?
I think if you could give us an indication on what the damage has, or in addition to what have, what, what. Not only cost and dollar wise, what that damage has been, but what was the extent of the damage? And then I think if you can look, one of the things that maybe I saw missing from your options was. And maybe it's just because I don't understand, you know, kind of protect the facility. But I'm looking at, you know, what else can be done upstream? How else can we mitigate? Is there, and one of the things you had talked about earlier, is there an opportunity to invest in? You know, a, a release valve at another community. And so I don't think we've gotten an update on that, or maybe we have and I've misplaced it in my mind. But you know, so what are some other options that maybe allow us to head some of those, some of those waters off before they make it to our community? And in what it may require investing outside of our city. But what other options are out there, you know, as we're thinking about this. You know, more collectively or globally outside of, you know, just this property in this space. And then what else? I appreciate the, you know, the burrows and the pumps and all of those sorts of things. There are, you know, potentially piece, piece of this. And then we all, you know, and I know it's going to take time as you start to unpack this. And you don't want to go find numbers for all of these options. But I think once we kind of have an understanding of maybe what's the best option for us. Then we're, we're going to have to have a couple of those and then we're going to have to start digging into what is, what are, what are the associated costs for those? So I, I, I do think this is going to take a lot of time to work through. The other thing that we did was we did an assessment, right, of that facility. And so if you can maybe dust that off and share that with us again, I would certainly appreciate that.
Sure.
Hopefully the other things that come to your mind through this too. I mean, and based on the responses that you're getting, you know, this evening as well.
Absolutely.
Dalton hopefully have down to the feasibility of raising the floor on the community center. Depend on where the ceiling is.
Yeah, so I mean, if, I can look into that one, Mike, but if, so if we raise the floor by two feet, we're going to have to raise the door frames by two feet. All the plumbing fixtures. Okay, yeah, I'll put that on the list.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that.
Hey folks, we've got enough for everybody to do. Shall we move on to the next item?
Well, real quick, when, when was the, the public works, the, the building, the safety? Or the space needs analysis completed?
That was July, early July of twenty eighteen.
When did you start, Dalton?
March.
Third. Okay, okay.
So I actually looked into that and that's one of the questions that Teresa had as well. There's no reference made to flooding in the space needs analysis. However, at the time, it was before the new flood maps were adopted. So it was, I mean, it was still right on the edge. Or marginally in the floodplain by the old maps. And. While it is a little frustrating. You know, it, it. It wasn't compliance. So it's, I, I sure wish hindsight's twenty twenty. So I sure wish we had asked the question. We were so focused on what can we do to this building to make, or should we, should we invest in this building? Or should we tear it down and start from scratch and start over? When really maybe the question should have been posed, should we really even be here in the first place? Because I think the resounding answer is hard no.
Yeah, Don, Don, I want to commend you too for, for being proactive on this and putting together these proposals. So thank you for doing that.
And just. Just one other thing, if you look at how far the floodplain and elevations have moved in the last twenty, thirty years. I don't think this is the end of that. I think twenty or thirty years and now it's going to be someplace else. So just keep in mind, you know, the people in the past did what they needed to do to assure compliance with the regulations. So we're in effect at that time. And now we see that, oh, it didn't work out in the long run as everybody had hoped. And that's not a criticism of them. That's just the fact of the situation. So this may not be the last time those flood elevations go up.
Well, and to that point, Mark, I appreciate you saying that because I think that, you know, when Dalton shared the flood. You know, what the map looked like in nineteen ninety-two, when those areas weren't developed and today they are. I guess my question would be, and this would be for experts and probably DNR, not, not myself. They don't know what those changes are or have been in that space and what we might anticipate or, you know, expect. And so based on the fact that a lot of that was largely agricultural ground and today it's not. But my question would be then the additional growth or urban spiral, whatever we call it today. Where that's happening and that land is otherwise being developed, how is that impacting our watershed specifically? And I think that that's one of the questions that we are going to have to ask because we do need, we, you know, we need to have an understanding of what to anticipate. We can sit here and speculate and say, well, it will grow, but we really, I, I don't know what that answer or what to anticipate would. We probably ha- can have a better answer from that, from the folks who actually deal with us on a, you know, on and on, you know, the experts in the space. And that's not, that's not me. So, so I think Dalton, anything that you can get. To have a better understanding of that would be helpful as well. So we can look and figure out whether or not that, that space will continue to be impacted and how far and those, you know, those sorts of things. I think are things we need to take into consideration.
I guess. One partnership has had a whole group working on it for well over a year. And the one thing that I can tell you that's come out of that stormwater group is it's going to continue because there's no place for the water to go. And it's continually being run off. A couple of two or three places that have been looked at as a larger retention basin. Have not come to fruition. They have a walking talk show that will be coming around to all the councils here real shortly. They've gone to some of them, we just haven't been on the top of the list.
Right, they have, I'm sorry, they have been to our council in the past. Maybe not in the last two years, but previously they have been and we've heard from them. And so, so it's not the first time, at least in my tenure, that we've had them to the council and we've talked about these issues. In particular. So yes, no, all, all issues we should be talking about and I look forward to hearing more about. But I, the wine partnership is one piece of that, but I, I really am referring to the people who are the experts that deal with us. So I'm hoping that we can, I look forward to whatever we learn from the DNR, I guess is my point.
I'd like to just jump, jump onto Mark's comment. We don't want the present and the future to be a reflection of the past. And I mean, the past was the past and I'm sure the people made the decisions that they thought was best at the time. So, but I think we've got to be a little proactive on this thing. And that's again, why I commend Dalton. But there's always problems. And I think. I really think we have people and, and contacts and smart people. They can help us solve the problem that we're in. I'm an optimist by nature.
Just to carry this a bit further, something the city could do would be to send out an RFP for the, for the watershed. That Windsor Heights is in. And I don't know how big that is or how built out it is. It's probably not a hundred percent built out. Maybe it'll never be a hundred percent built out, but engineers can come up with some ideas of how much more you could expect in the future. And what will that do to flood elevations if nothing else changes? I don't think it would hurt to have that information. I don't know that it's going to solve the problem, but it's another piece of the puzzle that can at least give you some information.
So the. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I think that we've had that information in the past. I think that it, I think, I feel like that information exists. I feel like we've heard that information before. So I don't know where it is in.
Yep, okay, well, we'll look around to what we can find.
Check with Darren Fife.
So the city of Windsor Heights currently, where the city is the chair of the Walnut, Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority. And I'm the city's representative for that. So ergo, I'm the city's, I'm the chair of the Walnut, Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority. Haven't been able to meet for a while, obviously. One of our big pushes was to install a bunch of regional detention basins in Walnut Creek. And so we were making really good headway on a project up at the Cuddy's Basin. You guys heard me talk about that, I think. It was going to be a one point six million dollar project and it was going to reduce flooding in Windsor Heights. By like a quarter of an inch at the one hundred gear flood. And so during any normal rain event, it would be completely negligible. And so for a regional detention basin and Doug Owen, Dykeover and Clive was beating this into me and I was trying to be optimistic. He was saying, you know, to make any measurable impact on flooding, you're going to have to get into every single property. Every single property has to start doing something because the way that they're doing it now is not working. So like our soil quality restoration thing, it is, it's so small, but if everybody did something small, it would help. We looked at a, a regional park out by Waquis. Um, we ran the models on it and the size of the basin, it would be like the size of Sailorville Lake before it had any impact on Windsor Heights. So um, the large scale regional basin, I hate, I hate to say that I stuck a fork in it, but just the cost benefit, it's just not, it's just not quite there. And so we've kind of shifted our focus to smaller, um, smaller, more implementable practices. So now we're looking south of Merle Hay Mall in the Urbandale neighborhood at, at some different practices that we can get done to at least help. But um, I was really hopeful that there would be like a, a magic bullet or a silver bullet that we could use to, you know, kind of a cure all. And it just spent the last like eight months trying to find a project and there's just not, there's not one. As far as the watershed being built out, um, Walnut Creek Watershed goes way, way out to Dallas County. And right now, I think the last count is that we were still under halfway built out. And there's no forecasting for the growth to slow. It, so I don't know if our problems are going to get any better. However, like, like the mayor said, we've, we've got these new stormwater post-construction management ordinances that are going to help. Uh, that's assuming that every city adopts them. That's assuming that every, every city enforces them and that there is hope, helpful as we're hoping they're going to be. But um, I, I think you guys are on the right track. I think getting out of the flood plain, like every government agency wants us to do is probably the right thing to do. Um, and Teresa, you're, you're definitely right. My, my thinking on this was originally focused on the public workshop and the salt storage facility and our equipment, just from, you know, maintaining city operations in the event of a flood. But the community center is just as, just as much a part of this. So um, definitely need to include that, obviously, in any considerations.
Uh, I think it might be helpful. I, I, I feel like we've kind of got a couple of different um, pieces that um, we need to tackle that are, you know, are very significant from the perspective of we infuse resources into um, these facilities all the time. Um, and we're consistently doing that. And if we're putting money into something that's, we're never going to get a return or that's, it's going to, or it's wasted, wasted dollars, I guess, is one portion of this. But the other one, and then coming back to, you know, the, the basin out at Cuddy's, um, I guess I never heard that we weren't going to do that. So that's new information to me today. But I think more importantly is it sounds like there's maybe some smaller projects. I think what might be helpful, um, and you're saying that we need to do some things, you know, we need to maybe do lots of more little things. I think what we need to probably do is have a better understanding then of what those are. So I don't know if you can um, give us an update or a presentation on what is, what is your thinking right now on the approach, on how we address um, the flooding or what some of those practices might be? If there's something we need to be, you said if you, you need to have everybody do something. Um, if that means that we need to facilitate um, an education outreach, you know, initiative with all of the residents in a certain area or whatever the case may be. Or maybe we look at investing into what are the practices that they need to do? If everybody needs to have a rain barrel, I don't know what the answer is. But if there, there are some of those practices, then maybe we need to have a conversation about what the city needs to be investing or offering to invest for our residents so that those practices can go into play. Those are the types of things I would, one, like to know that are happening and two, would like to be supportive of, I think particularly if there's something our residents can be doing or that we need to be investing in. And so um, this has really opened my eyes to, you know, an issue that we have actually spent a lot of time, I mean, that we, we've had to deal with, probably on the larger um, scale as far as funding, um, not only for our facilities, but two, with flooding issues. Um, and so I think that might be helpful for, if you could give us some sort of an update on where we are with projects or what needs to be done in our water, uh, watershed space with you, the committee, whomever. Um, and then what we might anticipate. Um, um, you know, as we're moving along and what, what, what would be some of the return with, with implementing strategies or implementing um, uh, plans to, to, you know, diminish the impact on our community? So, and I think we have to look at that from, you know, border to border, not just the Colby Park space.
Totally agree, yeah. I mean, this, so that's why, like, this is such a difficult conversation is because, yeah, we're trying, we're trying to get answers for three city-owned buildings, but what about for all these residents? I mean, you got sixty more residents that are now on the flood plain. And I mean, they, they were notified and there's a whole process that Sheila had to go through to, to make that happen. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a far greater issue than just figuring out, well, should we get flood insurance? I mean, there's a lot, this octopus has a lot of arms and they touch every aspect of city operations.
I think it's a process, Dalton, and you've got a good start at it. And uh, it should be an ongoing process, just not tonight.
Yeah.
There could be some, there could be some work sessions about this. Um, so you can share your expertise and maybe bring in some others. So we get a better handle on this.
Folks, let's let Dalton and the rest of staff do some work on this and we'll get back to you, moving on to another item.
Um, Dave, I'm going to just say, I'm going to say, I want, I want to say one more thing. I appreciate that you want to move on. Um, obviously, this is very important, it has a significant impact to our community. But um, I don't know if this falls under the realm of Public Works Work Group or if not. Or if Dalton, do we, I know that there's the, the watershed, I don't know if that's specific to the community. But I'm wondering if we should recruit and put together um, a, a work group specifically to address the flooding perspect, I mean, this flooding issues. Um, and then get that, that group, I, you know, I'm thinking businesses, residents, whatever, that need to be involved um, in that. So if that doesn't exist, um, or if that's not under the scope of um, uh, public safety, which I'm going to guess probably is, isn't, um, that, um, I would recommend that we um, consider doing that um, at this juncture, knowing where we are, so.
Teresa, we do have a public works committee, uh, that hasn't been there for quite a while, but there is that.
Right, Mike, and I, I think public, I mean, it, it, I, I don't, I, I'm thinking more about public works from the perspective of um, the building and the facilities and those sorts of things. I think this is a big, you know, undertaking and wondering if that is more, I, I think you're looking for some more ex, people who have some more expertise um, to be involved. Um, and um, and I certainly think council members should be as well. Um, and, and maybe that's your, your role as public works, but I'm thinking getting some folks.
I disagree with you, but I, I think of the, as Dave said, we're not going to solve it tonight.
I'm not suggesting that we're, we're going to solve it tonight. What I'm suggesting is, is that you get some folks with some technical expertise that can come in and be helpful um, in this area um, and put them on a committee and help us get there.
So the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority uh, is comprised of all the, all the communities in the Walnut Creek Watershed, except for Dallas County. Uh, and we have a plan sub, or a Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority Plan. And that plan is kind of um, expectations and goals for the watershed moving forward. And when I became the chair, I was like, why, why are we meeting here quarterly? What, like, so I went to eight of these meetings and I asked, why are we doing this? Because we haven't gotten a single thing done. And so then I put together a plan implementation committee. And that planning implementation committee was the Water Resources Engineer from Polk County, the Water Resources Engineer from the City of Clive, City Engineer from uh, Waquis and uh, the City Engineer from Grimes. And I mean, I'll admit, they are far smarter than I am on that stuff. So I, I defer to their expertise and we identified a goal. And uh, they said Windsor Heights, what's your goal? And I said, I want to reduce, reduce flooding on seventy-third university. You can see that seventy-third university is um, obviously not what we're shooting for, but if we reduce flooding on seventy-third and Uni, we reduce it downstream of there as well. And so that was kind of where we started from. Uh, and reducing that to the point where it was a noticeable impact was so incredibly cost intensive that it was, it was just not feasible. And so, I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars to prevent the flooding that's going to happen in, in Colby Park. It, it's a amount of money that the city of Windsor Heights wouldn't get in a century in stormwater utility revenues. So I, I hear you, like, bringing in the experts. I, I did it because I was getting frustrated that nothing was getting done. And so I brought all these really smart people together and, and kind of face defeat, I guess. So now we're going from the big, let's figure out how to solve this whole problem to everybody needs to adopt these post-construction stormwater ordinance things. Everybody needs to have some kind of a cost share program, like you guys are supporting for the rain barrels and the soil quality restoration. Like you guys are already very supportive of this. Uh, Windsor Heights City Council adopted ordinance last year to improve our, our stormwater post-construction ordinance, which um,
I just wanted the region.
Yeah, us and Clive kind of bicker back and forth over who has a better ordinance. I think we do, they do. Uh, so I mean, it's, it's not like we're doing nothing, but it's really getting our partners upstream to do something. And as they continue to grow, it's just going to keep getting worse. So unless you guys want to go out there and tell them, hey, stop building houses and growing, I just.
We have the largest water retention basin in the metro area in the entire Walnut Creek Reservation. It's right here in Colby Park. That's where all of this started. We started this a couple of years ago with uh, my lag, we got them involved in it. Dalton's been involved in the watershed management. And we're doing everything that we can do in, between us really and Clive on our side of the house, but we got to get the people up north and that involves everybody, including the farmers. And it isn't happening. So I'm going to shut this one off, we've got plenty of work to do. I need to go on to the next one, which is Consideration Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy, authorizing Metro Waste Authority to renew the existing contract for the collection of municipal solid waste on behalf of the city.
Move to approve. Like it.
Roll call.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Uh, Harms.
Yes.
Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
LaFredo.
Yes.
Next item is Consideration Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-one, authorizing the use of twenty-five thousand dollars for a small business grant program. Mark, do you want to explain a little bit about this?
Sure, uh, I've sent out a couple of emails on this. The partnership is kind of spearheading having a locally funded grant program to help small businesses. Uh, the emails indicated that people who've received funding from other agencies prior to this would not be eligible. This is intended to get to the people who haven't had uh, success with the existing programs. Um, the per capita amount, um, I think was two dollars and eighty cents. And uh, when the development committee met last week, they decided that, well, maybe Windsor Heights can do a little better than that. Uh, and so they're recommending twenty-five thousand dollars for the program, um, which would be more than the required, I guess, say, amount from the partnership. Um, I'm sorry, it's two thousand thirty cents was the recommended amount. Uh, partnership said this afternoon, they haven't had as much participation from some of the outlying areas. And so they're going to increase their participation from a dollar per capita to a dollar fifty per capita, which will put some more money into the program. Um, so this resolution is written based on the recommendation coming out of the Economic Development Committee for twenty-five thousand dollars, which is a little more than double what the city would be required to put in at the two dollars and thirty cent per capita amount. Not sure what else to say. I think it's worth doing, like, there's probably businesses who could use this, who not experienced success with previous programs. So that's what I can tell you.
Just for clarification, so nonprofits cannot apply, correct? That's what I read. Okay, nonprofit, so that eliminates a group. Um, if you, um, and if you've a qualif, if you've qualified for any state grant, and then I wasn't clear on the PPP, if you qualified for that, can you qualify or no?
No. If the business has received any funding from either the state or federal programs, they would not be eligible. This is intended to get at the people who weren't successful with those efforts.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. Um, a couple more questions. What, um, who will be the group who reviews the grants?
Uh, there's an organization uh, that the partnership is lining up. It's called the um, let's see here, Iowa Center for Economic Success will be reviewing and scoring the applications. The applications will then go to each city that's participating for them to review and determine what they want to do as far as funding from the city. Um, so assuming that Windsor Heights participates, there would be money from the city in that uh, allocation of the business. There would be money from the county, there would be money from the partnership. The partnership is still doing their fundraising, they're expecting to raise some more. So there would be three entities funding these applications. The need would be based on the Iowa Center for Economic Success Evaluation of the Application and they will make a recommendation. The city doesn't have to follow the recommendations, the city will make its own decision. Recommendation is just as a way to help try to standardize the responses to some degree. So it's going to be up to the city then to decide who gets how much of the city's funding. And then if the city puts in more than the two thousand thirty cents per capita, the partnership may put in a larger amount. Uh, they've not committed to absolutely doing that because they're still doing their fundraising. So they don't know what the total amount is they're dealing with yet. Can I answer your question?
When you, um, kind of, um, just uh, very helpful, thank you. Um, when you say the city will approve, so who is this quote unquote, the city who is approving? The, I want to know who, I mean, is it coming to city council? Is it, are, is he doing it, is it administration?
I think it would be good to have the Economic Development Committee look it over and make a recommendation of the city council. Then the city council make the final decision on what those allocations are.
Okay, great. How is this being advertised to? Would we work with a chamber then? Is that, if, I don't know if somebody.
Yeah, that, that would be one way. We could push it out on our own social media. The partnership is going to make a concerted effort to get the word out. Also, just in general to the metro area, but we would use our own communication devices. And I'm sure that the uh, chamber would be, I, I would hope they'd be willing to help, I think that would be.
Okay, and then lastly, it looks like there's an opportunity to, or there's a, potentially a cost associated with the other group if they actually uh, send the, the ISAs, um, will not invoice the city if they, um, if we write our own checks. Um, I think it's always better for the city to be presenting uh, money to local folks than it coming from an outside entity. So um, I'm supportive of this. Um, as a local business owner, I'm, I'm, I think this is a great way to help and give back to those who have been invested in our, in our community. Um, and uh, but I think we should, I think they should be Windsor Heights checks. Um, since we're putting the biggest dollar on the line um, as well. So thank you, Mark, for the.
Yes. Yes, you're welcome. I'm sure there's a way to work it out so that the, the payments would be identified as coming from the city.
I'm assuming Rochelle could write those checks pretty easily to whoever gets them, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll find a way.
For sure.
I know that during the economic development, the committee meeting, I brought up, um, there are a few small businesses that would not qualify for this um, partnership uh, deal because they have not been in business for a year. And I know that the, the toughest part of being in a business is your first year. Um, I'm not sure if anybody, um, I kind of went through, um, did a little work with the chamber. And um, there's a few places that wouldn't have been around since July of twenty nineteen that might also um, be in need of a little bit of assistance. So I know that we do have like two hundred and thirty-ish thousand dollars in an economic development fund that can be only, that only can be used for economic development. So I don't, didn't know if we wanted to add um, another layer where we can help out the businesses that haven't been around for a year, but um, maybe put a clause on that they're in Windsor Heights for six months or um, you know, we can put on various different clauses like they have to have a physical location. They have to be an LLC or an S corp. Um, they have to have two or more W two. They have to have two or more W two employees. You know, whatever the city council really would kind of look at and. Just to help these businesses, I just, I walk past good company all the time. And I know that they've only been around a little bit. Our eye has only been around for a little bit. So I, I'm just curious what council's opinion on that is.
I mean, for like a separate, a different program, an additional program?
Yeah, kind of an additional program to this. You know, maybe use what? Use the standard that is being used here in this partnership so that we kind of keep it. The same. But of course, they, they won't be able to receive as much money because, you know, we won't have Polk County's assistance or Greater Des Moines Partnership's assistance, but. If it's enough to just pay rent for another month or two, it might be worth keeping them. Or it might allow them to stay in the city that one or two months of, of rent might be what keeps them in business.
I think it's a great idea. I agree. I like it. And I think we can use the same, probably use the same application. And then that would have to, it sounds like come to our, just our committee and then our committee would. Make the determinations. I'm assuming the partnership would probably share their criteria on scoring and those sorts of things. So. I think we just need to decide how much, how many dollars we would want to put into that, knowing that those are all city dollars. Mark, I think you said that we had somewhere around the neighborhood of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our economic development fund for this last year, correct?
Yes.
So if we have that amount and we're looking and this recommendation is to put twenty five and we'd have some matching from those others. Susan, did you have a dollar figure in mind or did economic development have a dollar figure in mind on how much? How many additional dollars we'd want to put in for the businesses that have been? First, you know. For six months or.
I, I think that we wanted to bring it to the council before we really, you know, was this something that the council was okay with? Before we, I, I guess we never really talked about any money amount. I just didn't know. I, I don't think we knew how council would react just because the, the businesses haven't been in Windsor Heights for a year.
Yeah, I have.
The criteria that we had from the partnership when we were discussing it in the Development Committee. Now, if we want to change the parameters, I may want to change the amount of money. That'd be another issue that we'd have to look at. Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
My comment was that I have no idea how many. Pre-one-year businesses we have in Windsor Heights. So I have, I have no, no feel for this, what we're really talking about. So.
I think. I think we have like thirteen to fifteen, but not all of them would qualify or, you know. Again, I'm, I'm looking at. I guess I don't have the exact. Date that they started. You know, I'm kind of guestimating when they came into existence here in Windsor Heights. Just by when I noticed them or when they kind of had their ribbon cutting or, you know, stuff like that.
Well, perhaps the chamber could help us identify those businesses.
And the, the chamber and I, Lauren Campbell and I went through and kind of that, that was our rough note. I think about thirteen. The, my paper isn't here, so I'm kind of going off. The top of my head on that.
Yeah, well, that's fine. No, I. Yeah, I just, we may, I guess, just, I would like to ensure that. The small businesses, all of them are aware. Of it. I don't know how to do that because I don't know who all the small businesses are.
We have approximately a hundred and thirty seven small businesses in the location of Windsor Heights. That have a storefront and a. What do you call it? The writing on the door or writing on the window?
How many? Hundred and thirteen, Dave?
Hundred and thirty seven.
Hundred and thirty seven. It'd be kind of nice to know. What Suzie's talking about then in ones that are within one year, less than one year.
Well, that was just the list that I accumulated by driving around and counting the names.
Well, that's good, Dave. I mean, that's that. I didn't know that, so it's good information for me. Lot more than I would think we had.
How about a plea? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, can maybe the Economic Development Committee? Do their work and come back to with us with a recommendation and a resolution for this at our next meeting?
I think we can.
Yes, that's just what I was going to suggest is that we bring it back at the next meeting with round two, so to speak.
Great. Mine's like a light, Mark.
Very good.
Well, I'd like to move the current resolution though. It's before us.
Roll call.
And LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Skerries?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is discussion, discussion and possible consideration of firework display agreements. Chad?
Yes, I sent everybody. Last week, the three proposals from J and M fireworks. A seven thousand dollar option, an eighty five hundred dollar option, and a ten thousand dollar option based on our discussion at the last council meeting. Where council's desire was between seven and ten. So you can see kind of a difference in what those shows would look like. The early pay discount we received last year, they've extended that to like a day before the show this year, so I'm sure we'll take advantage of that. And then the thing is the multi-year. I know we talked about that last year, and I know council had some hesitation on entering into that. And I think that discussion centered more around. Entering into agreement to fund a show than it did to necessarily use the same vendor. We've used the same vendor for some time, so it may be beneficial to us to. Enter into that agreement with them if we were to, to have shows in the future, but it in no way locks us into doing that if we decide not to fund more, if you decide not to fund one in the future. But so basically, there's three questions that we need answered from council. One, do you want to do a firework show? Two, what level do you want to fund it? And three, do you want to enter into the multi-year? Agreement to extend some extra discounts.
Do we, should we answer those one at a time?
Sure. The main one I think that takes council action is the, the funding of it, so. I don't know.
Chad, can I just? From, from my quick calculation here, if we looked at the eighty five hundred. Dollar. Display. And taking off eight percent, it takes it down to seventy twenty. And then if you get the fifteen percent off that, it brings it down to sixty six forty seven.
The way that those are set up, if you look at the quotes, it's not a reduction in price, it's an addition in product. So if you look at the quotes, it's eighty five hundred dollars is the price, but then you'll see on the second or third page there where he's got the additional product.
Okay, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
So as I look to that, if you, based on that approach, Chad, it looks like. The. Seventy five hundred dollar, excuse me, the seven thousand dollar package becomes an eighty two hundred dollar package. The eighty five hundred dollar package really becomes a ten thousand dollar package. And the ten thousand dollar package really becomes about a twelve hundred dollar pack, or a twelve thousand dollar. You guys know what I mean, right? Twelve thousand dollar package. So do you, you know, so where, do you want to? I mean, the question is, where do we want to fall within that mix, I think? And so I think as we are answering these questions and certainly I'll answer them for myself and. I think right now we need something to bring our community together. I think fireworks and Fourth of July is something that we can, we can do to do that. I am hopeful at some point in our future. That one, we will be able to expand our Fourth of July celebration and two. That we'll be able to raise some dollars in the community to be able to do that, but. So I, I think, yes, I would like to move forward with something. I'm either at the eighty five hundred, or excuse me, the eighty, yeah, the eight thousand five hundred or the ten thousand dollar packages are probably where I'm at, and. I think it makes sense based on what they've outlined to do the three-year. Agreement because there's an, I mean, we don't have to do it, so. There's my two cents.
I would agree. The, like I said, the previous discussion on the multi-year contract, I think just the, the presentation of it may have been off a little bit, but I think it makes sense.
Make a motion, trees.
You know, I, I, I would make, I, I don't know where other people are falling on the dollar amount, and I, so I would like some feedback. I'm, I'm, I want to do a nice show for folks. I think that I'm somewhere in that ten thousand dollar range, so if it's. Eighty five hundred dollar package with the benefits of getting to the ten thousand or the ten thousand dollar that now turns into, you know, about twelve thousand, I'm open to. I, I think both of those would be nice packages to be able to do for our community.
There's no penalty to cancel.
If it's COVID related, that's correct. If, if the doesn't go because of the, the pandemic, then they will either refund a hundred percent of the money or we can put a fifty percent down payment to keep the same prices for next year's show. But if it's not related to, to the pandemic, then yes, there would be a fee for that.
I'd like to make a motion, maybe, and that would be to do the eighty five hundred dollar show with the. Bringing it up to the ten thousand with the bonuses. So that would be my motion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
And so they, just to clarify, the motion is for the eighty five hundred and then enter into the three-year agreement.
Correct.
Can I just ask, how many years have we used J and M displays?
I don't have an answer for you, Sue. I know it's been several. It was done at least a couple of years prior to me getting here, and then we used them again last year, but I don't have an exact number of how long it's been. I know last year when we. I actually did some research with different vendors to see if that was the best. Bang for our buck, no pun intended. But. At that time, our show was small enough that a lot of vendors didn't want to, want to deal with it. And I think there is two J and M and one other, and the other one had some problems with the date because he had a limited number of shooters and, and they were already pulled for the fourth. So. We did have a, a little bit of a hiccup last year with the delay in the, the firing of the J and M show and. I expressed my displeasure to the owner and he, I think he understood that, and I doubt seriously we'll have that again this year, so.
I knew that there were some issues with the fireworks display last year. I guess my other question is, what do they consider the, the COVID? So if the governor says everything's great, we can go back to regular. Distancing, you know, we don't have to worry about that, but we don't feel comfortable having. I don't know, five thousand people in the area. Would that be considered a COVID nineteen? Deal, like, would we be able to get out of this? Contract? Just because the city doesn't feel comfortable?
I, and speaking with Mark up at J and M so far, he's been, been very flexible in this and, and the definition of that, we talked about that a little bit. And he said he understands it's fluid and that's why they're making the concessions to either refund or, or do the fifty percent down for next year. But in talking with him, he did not put a limitation on it of it being from the governor. So I think any reasonable. You know. Cancellation, I think will be fine. I can clarify that with him before we sign off on it, but. As long as it's not, everything's open and we just decided we don't want to pay for it.
I'm sure there'd be some lead time to make that decision.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Skerries?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Okay, next item is council reports and any committee updates. We'll start off in the corner, Susan.
The Economic Development Committee met on April twenty ninth. Most of that was to discuss the Small Business Recovery Grant Program. We talked pretty in-depth about this and. Because there were many questions that we had and they seemed to be answered for us properly. We also were brought up to date on the property at sixty third and University as well as given info about the old Kmart store. And also the property on sixty third and Hickman. And that's it.
Susan, can you share your updates or reports on those other properties, sixty third and Hickman, the Kmart store? I know they've been doing a lot of work on that. What's, can you tell us what? Or whatever update or report was given to you?
I think, didn't council get that information in a packet referenced the Kmart? I believe we sent it out to everybody. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, we can resend it. Because it had maps and. What they were going to do.
Dave, I don't recall seeing that, but I could have missed it.
I thought it just went out to us on the committee. Yeah, it, it got sent out to Mark. Travis, Dalton, Joseph, myself and Rochelle.
And we'll figure that out later.
We will do that.
Okay.
What it boils down to is they're opening it up like it's going to be perhaps a big mall. That they're making the multiple, you know, openings that they see. And then they've got the, I think it's Unity, the Unity Point that has the. Walk-in clinic. It's going to be out there where the Amaco was.
Primary Health.
Yeah, and then they've got the rest of the areas. They're subplotted and they were going back to Urbandale P and Z to get all approval for all of that. But that came out just last week. So I'm sorry it didn't get sent out. I thought we did that, that that's an oversight. We'll try and improve on that.
Great. How about the other?
And then the, the rest, we really don't have any further updates on anything, so. I did say that when I drove past sixty third and Hickman, I saw a different realty sign than what I'd seen before. So I think that the city was kind of looking into that to see. With the, the new Realtor kind of where we're at, that would be, I think, the former or what QuickTrip purchased.
Yes.
And then sixty third and University, we have no further updates.
The one update that we did get though, Susan, I think was one of the two bidders was out and whoever. Can we say that, Mark, who it was?
Yeah. Sure. You heard you say, did we or can we?
Can we?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, the other bidder that's still in is C Store. Ivy is out of it. That's the last update that we had just before the Economic Development Committee meeting.
What was the name, Dave, of the one?
C Store.
Okay.
It could be several different. Folks behind it, but. That's what they call it.
I'm in a funny position on this. I mentioned this before. The, the church is, you know, they, they're getting the same information that the city's getting. The church could say anything to anybody at any point in time and the word would be out in public, so I. I, I reluctant to have the city be the. Entity releasing information on this. So it's a C store vendor that's still interested and. We're waiting to hear from the church. They weren't quite enthused about the offer, but they didn't say no, so I'm kind of waiting to hear from them. About what they're doing next.
The other sign that Susan was talking about was the one for. There was a new vendor, new. Realty company that has taken over selling the QuickTrip Corner as opposed to NAP. And Heard who does, does the rest of it up there.
I also did send out an email asking about sixty sixth and University, so. So I'm sure that that will be on our next economic development committee meeting. I sent that out after we had our meeting, after we discussed like sixty third, both those properties and the Kmart property.
Michael, LaFredo?
Yes, sir. I want to remind everybody, coming up, Chad, May tenth through the sixteenth is National Police Week. And I'm proudly wearing a T-shirt that was produced by the Federal Secret Service Agents. That highlights that. And we're fortunate to have Chad's leadership and the officers of Windsor Heights. So be sure you say hi to them during that week or any day. They they keep us safe and it's a tough job. I mean, just read the papers and look at TV. And I would also, secondly, just like to thank our our team, our staff members that are carrying on well during this pandemic. And keeping the city running, from what I can see, pretty smoothly. And my last one is simply to wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day coming up. And so that is my report to the council.
Joseph?
Nothing for me.
Michael Jones?
We had a budget committee meeting and I believe you saw everything was sent out by Rochelle with regards to the proposed amendment, memo, all of that information. So we met, we talked about that and all of that information was passed on to council.
Therese?
I have been selected as one of the committee members to review Mike McCoy's his executive director review at the Metro Waste Authority. And so I've been in the process of that for the last couple of weeks. And other than that, that's all I've got today.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
You may recall that a contract was signed with Key Consulting, your Key L is consulting for job description and wage wage review that works now done. I'm hoping to get that out to the council members in the next day or two and to be considered at the next council meeting. We also asked them to work on personnel policies. They're coming close to the end of that. And we'll be going to the city attorney for their consideration probably this week. There is now apparently a question about FEMA funding for work from home technology. Chief informed me that they're now questioning whether that's an eligible expense. I I know he's seen this with FEMA. I've seen this with FEMA until the grants closed out. You can't really be sure what is going to be funded for certain. So we can't absolutely count on that money from FEMA. Pre-construction meeting for PCC patching is occurring tomorrow. And I think the contractor is planning on getting a good share they worked on this month. That's the word anyway at the moment. I will be out of the office Wednesday, Thursday and Friday this week. I have purchased a Wi-Fi hotspot and I'll have my computer and my files with me while I'm gone. So I'm going to try to work a couple hours a day to keep things going here and see how that works from wherever I'm going to end up in Wisconsin, whether there's an internet connection there. And I'm continuing or intending to revisit the commercial tax abatement issue soon. And possibly there will be something on this on the next agenda. Thank you.
Mark, have you made contact with Shirley on the administrator search?
Yes, the ads are out. The last, last week, she sent me an email and said something like she's seeing different, more qualified people interested this time than previously. So that's a positive note. I think I sent her email out. I can't remember exactly what the schedule is. I don't have it. Get it out of my file if you're curious.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. So, yeah, it's it's going and she said she's heard from people, but she didn't hear from the last time.
Well, good. I think.
I hope so.
I do, I do.
Anything further from council or staff? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Scaries?
Yes.
Yes. Joseph Jones?
Yes.
LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yes.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye bye.